This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so today is Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022. This evening, the City Council will be having a work session. And just as kind of a quick review here, council, this is a meeting for the City Council members. So we'll have a couple of presenters this evening. We'll go through the the meeting. There'll be opportunities, of course, for the council members to ask any questions they have or any discussions they would like. But there will be no opportunity for public comment at this at a work session. So I see we have quite a few visitors on this evening. I want to welcome everybody. I'm glad that you're here to listen in and follow along with the meeting. However, there will not be an opportunity for citizen public comment at this evening's work session. So with that being said, are there any questions from the council members or comments before we get started? Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Mayor, do you want to do a roll call?
Yep. So that was next thing, if we could please do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Fox.
Excuse me, here. Good evening.
Good evening. Councilmember Casper.
I am here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Strobin.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
And Mayor Thornton.
Present. Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. The first presenter this evening will be the City Accountant, Riley Babera, and he'll go over a financial overview. He has a PowerPoint presentation that he'll be sharing with the council. So with that, Riley, if you could please get started with your PowerPoint and your presentation. Thanks.
Okay, let's see if I can get this to share here. All right, there we go. So we are going over a bit of the city's finances today. Hold on, I gotta have this so I can see myself a little bit as well, change my view a little bit. Alrighty, so going over the city's finances. Why are we doing this? We have some new council members, so you know, they may have not paid attention to all of my thrilling quarterly updates that I've had. And you know, I've learned a bit over the last year, so it's kind of good to introduce this to everybody. What we're going to be going over, the general structure of things, how everything's kind of interconnected, how all the different funds kind of play off of each other. And, excuse me, and how to read some of the different financial documents. I'm not going to get too much into the specifics of like the current year or the prior year numbers of like the actual budgets or anything like that. But if you were to be looking at one of those documents, some of the things that would help you connect between them and a few things like that. So we're gonna start out with just looking at the overall structure of the city's finances. There's kind of three basic categories of funds I have here. It's general fund, the capital projects funds, and the enterprise funds. I apologize for not getting you these slides earlier, but I've got definitions on the next page that I'll be getting to. So this is essentially my realm. You know, there's some other things like the school district. That is not my realm. I don't know anything about those finances. But this is my bread and butter. This is what I know. So we'll start out talking about the the general funds, this category on the left over here. So there's two pieces in that you'll see, the general and the reserve. Those numbers after them, those are some identifiers that we have for tracking and recording purposes. That's not necessarily anything that you guys need to know. So the general fund, the definition that you'll see coming up here in a second, is pretty much anything that doesn't go in a different category. That goes into the general fund. In addition to that, we have a reserve fund that we had set aside as a revenue stabilization sort of fund. Meaning, you know, in the upcoming years, if we had any sort of dramatic impacts to our revenue coming in or big expenses, we had some funds in there. And going over our reserve policy is on my immediate to-do list. But essentially, that's what we have in there is money that is not to be spent for any purposes other than something kind of drastic. After that, we have the capital project funds. So what these are, are to be used to account for and report financial resources that are restricted, committed, or assigned to expenditure for capital outlays, including the acquisition or construction of capital facilities. So that kind of means is that this is money that is set aside for things that can't be spent on other things. So we have three different categories in here. We've got the impact fees. So when we get monies from, you know, traffic, traffic impact fees, park impact fees, we have the limits on what we could spend those on. And those are tracked in the impact fees fund. Capital projects, some of the revenue that we get there is the real estate excise tax as well as grants. And those are limited to what we could spend as well. And we usually got that pretty laid out in a nice summary of what our capital projects are for the year. We also have this vehicle and equipment fund, which is money that we set aside that can only be spent on vehicles and equipment. Over here on the far right, we've got the enterprise funds. And so what an enterprise fund is, they're to be used to report any activity for which a fee is charged to external users for goods or services. So things that we charge money for, so like, you know, sewer and stormwater bill. And the reason these are kind of tracked separately is to make sure that we're not making too much money on them. You know, we don't want to be overcharging the citizens and just raking in the funds, and I assure you, we're not doing that. And another thing, this sewer fund is actually broken down into three separate ones. Really, that is the sewer capital fund, the sewer fund, and the sewer debt service fund. So I've got just some definitions here. I don't necessarily expect you to memorize these or anything. I'm an accountant. You guys aren't. You don't necessarily have to memorize these, but if you ever want to go back and look at these, these are some of the definitions that we have for them. And a lot of this stuff, I don't expect everybody to retain everything, but you know, it's just a good introduction to have for everything. All right, next I'm going to go over some of the major reports that we have. And starting at the top, we have the annual financial statements or AFS. This can actually also sometimes mean audited financial statements, and for the most part, they're the same thing. The difference being in for right now, our 2020 and 2021 have not been audited yet because we're on a three-year cycle, so those are unaudited. But the format is still the same. So we prepare those. We get some help from our CPA firm. We have to file these with the state auditor's office. And you can look up all of our previous ones at this link that I have here, the state auditor's website. And those will have their audit reports as well. And I could probably talk for an hour on how to read audit reports, but we don't have time for that, and I don't think anybody wants to hear it right now, so we're gonna skip over that. So real quick, let's look at what those look like. So this is our 2020, this annual financial statements that we filed. And a couple of things that I want to point out here is on the far left column, we have the total for all of our funds. So this is combining every single thing across the board, and this is actually on two different pages because it just doesn't really fit all that well. But for the most part today, we're going to be focusing on the general fund. And something that I'm going to get to, that's on one of my next slides, is if we're trying to compare things like, you know, this one right here and our budget, our budget will have two different things. It comprises this general fund. That's the general fund and the reserve fund. So if you're trying to go between those two and say, hey, how come our revenue was 2.893 billion on the this one and X on the budget? That's kind of the difference is there's a couple of things put together here. Same with this, we just have sewer. That's actually the sewer.
Interrupt you real quick, Riley. This is Tom. We didn't receive these slides, or at least I didn't anyways, and I thought I heard you say that at the beginning of the presentation. So it makes it pretty hard for us to actually follow along the line items to be able to ask questions. Is there any way that you can send this out while you're speaking to us? So we can blow it up on our screens?
Yeah, I'm not sure of a way that I can email them. I don't have like a prepared list or anything like that.
I can do that.
Maria can. Uh, okay, thank you. This was made fairly last minute. I actually just got it done at lunch today and only started on Monday. So apologize for not getting these out a little earlier to you guys.
Yeah, it's not a problem, Riley. Just you can't, you know, your screens are only so big, so you can only see so much. And to be able to ask questions if we're going to go line by line, we really need to be able to read what the lines are saying.
Right.
Plus, I'm getting old.
Yeah, and I got a note on that later because, you know, in these annual financial statements, they've got the entire thing on two pages. Because there's just really no way that you can fit everything where you get all the good information that you need in one nice, easy-to-read format. Which is kind of unfortunate, but that's just because there's a lot of information.
Also, I want to note really quickly, is on the new go-to, on the bottom, there says, there says the word fit. And that's where your zoom is, so you can zoom up and down, and you can actually put your cursor on the screen and you can move it around. And so if you have the the updated go-to, that is an option as well, but I'm working on getting that sent to you.
I'm going to have to learn how to do that at a later time. Apologize. So the annual budget that we prepare, this is something, another one that we prepare internally. We have some help with our budget advisory committee, and a lot of people inside that are working for the city helped us with this. Our current and prior year ones are available on the city's website. We don't really have a good archive. You know, they're not like any place that these are stored forever. Usually you could just kind of Google them, and if you can't find something you're looking for, you can always email me, and I know where they are. These don't really have any formatting requirements on them. And you've probably seen over the years, there's been a number of different formats, and it's still kind of a work in progress. But what I've kind of been trying to do is mirror the annual financial statements the best I can because that's how we have to report things, and then just kind of making my own tweaks to make things a bit more readable. So we're gonna go here to the, and so this is where I apologize for people that have glasses. This is the best I could do to get all of this on one screen. So I'm going to zoom in here a little bit just to show you a couple of things here. So here, the general fund is on the far left, and again, a lot of what we're going to be talking about is the general fund. So this, what we're looking at right now, let me make sure I got my year right here. I think this is the, yeah, this is the 2022 budget. So whereas if we go back to this, and again, this would be a lot easier if you had your own screens. But where the annual financial statements, they have revenues, then they go down to expenditures, then they do other increases, other decreases to get down to a number. I thought it was just easy to combine all of those other things in one line, so they look a little different. And then the the total isn't going to be on our far right over here. But so other than that, though, the things that you see like taxes, licenses, licenses and permits, intergovernmental, all these things kind of mirror what we have on the financial statements the best we can. But however, this general and reserve, you'd have to combine the two if you wanted to compare it to the annual financial statements.
So, excuse me, Riley, it's Greg. So we're going through this relatively quickly, and I, you know, I if any of the council members have questions, we've gone through the slides. Is there anything that council has questions on at this point? Again, we went through a lot of material fast, so.
And you should have the slides in your email.
Okay, so this is all making, this is all making sense, council members, that you're following along and understand what Riley's talking about with regard to the financial statement, the audited financial statement, and then the city budget? Good.
Okay.
Yeah, so first, so good.
Pardon?
If anybody has any questions too, feel free to send me an email. You know, I I look at this stuff a lot, so I could probably answer any questions you have. And then this last document I was going to show you is, this is our Q1 quarterly presentation that I put together last year. And so again, I just tried to do my best to mirror the categories that we have. There's a lot going on on this one because I had a lot more to talk about on that. But again, this is one that we didn't really have any sort of, we don't even have to make it, to be honest, but that's just, it's a good way to keep everybody updated. And in theory, you should be able to compare these line items back to the annual financial statements and the budget. So some comparability issues between them. I think I've kind of gone over these. One of the main things is the combining of funds in the annual financial statements. It's just one of those things where you kind of got to look at the two and I guess either know the answer already of how these things fit together, or just play around with, add up a couple of things and see if they all make sense. And I apologize for going through all this stuff pretty fast. I think I was told to keep it to about 15, 20 minutes if I could. And this is stuff that I could talk about, you know, hours and hours, how it was even tough to keep it down to just 15 slides. So this next one, though, I feel is pretty important. Because this is, I feel, causes a lot of confusion when people are talking with each other, whether you're talking to the public, whether you're talking to somebody like me in finance, getting specific terminology to know what everybody, you know, everybody's on the same page, I suppose. And one of those things is fund balance versus reserves. Now, often hear about, we have X amount of dollars in our reserves, why can't we spend that, so on and so forth. So first, let me introduce the term fund balance to you. So this is an accounting term, and it's usually either getting fund balance or ending fund balance because fund balance doesn't actually change throughout the year. You don't necessarily need to know that. But I put a little example in here from 2021, and these are our real numbers. It may change a little bit because we haven't filed these financial statements yet. But started out with, there was cash in the general fund, and that's just the general fund, not the reserve fund. Just the general fund had about $100,000 in it starting 2021. There was an annual actual surplus in just the general fund of close to a million, which meant at the end of the year, there was a little over a million in the fund balance of the general fund. So often, when you guys are thinking of reserves, what you're kind of thinking about is this fund balance. And so reserves is a term that I just kind of try to avoid using as much as I can just so they don't get the terms confused because the reserve fund is a, is, you know, it's a separate fund that we have. And so when we're talking about how much do we have in our reserves, I assume that you're talking about our reserve fund. But often people are talking about what is the fund balance in a general fund. Does that concept kind of make sense, I suppose? So the fund balance is how much money we have in each fund and our reserves, it's kind of only referring to our reserve fund. So going into the general fund a little bit. So earlier, towards the beginning of these slides, you saw a thing that looked a whole lot like this with the general fund on top or with the city's finances on top, and then down at the far left, you had the general fund. Well, that general fund gets broken down into a whole bunch of different things as well. So we split them into seven different departments, and those are based on, a lot of times, based on the bodies that are working in those departments. But functional cost sectors might be a better way to think about it. But we only separate these, distinguish them for our expenditure tracking purposes, not for our revenue tracking purposes. And the reasoning for that is that all of the revenue that we get into the general fund, it's not even positive what the correct term is these days because it's been changed a number of times, uncommitted, unreserved, unrestricted. You can kind of spend it on anything that's, you know, would qualify for a general fund expense. So as a result, it's not like we can say that, you know, the legislative department is making or losing money. Because, you know, while there may be some, you know, revenues that you can associate with them, they're not really just, not really tracked that way. So the different departments we have, finance, that's me, legislative, that's our city council paying for that, as well as a number of other things. Police, municipal court, that's one that we made up this year. That's a pretty small one, just court costs. Our community development, and then our public works is split into the public works operations and the parks operations. And real quick, on these next two slides, I don't really want to get into too much of the detail about our 2021 finances because I get to do another presentation on that shortly, and you know, don't want to give away too many spoilers or anything like that. But just to kind of give you a look at what our general fund revenue looks like. These aren't exactly the same types of categories that you'll see on our budget or on our annual financial statements. But I was able to pull out some kind of big, specific ones. And kind of the reason I'm showing you this is to get an idea of the percentages that we're looking at when we look at these things. Because, you know, for all that we tried to do to increase revenue, so on and so forth, a lot of the things are fairly static or outside of our control. So and of course, I've always asked to point out that this ARPA funds, that's the COVID grant money, we got 475,000 in 2021, and again in 2022, and presumably never to be seen again. We shouldn't be seeing those funds, I would assume, anytime 2023 or in the future. So that's not exactly a reliable stream there. And so then all these others are, that's just everything else I could find. And with our expenditures, I just kind of ran out of time, so I didn't break these down all that much. But kind of a really big thing to show is how much our salaries and our benefits really are combined. It's like over 50% of what we spend. So, you know, for all the talk we do about trying to reduce expenses, again, you know, there's, we have contracts, we've got collective bargaining agreements. And, you know, I don't think there's any person working for the city that doesn't have a full-time job. You know, I don't think there's any extra slack there. So there's, I guess, there's only so much wiggle room, I guess you would say. And, you know, with how much of the salaries and benefits those are. And of course, that professional services is another really big category, and that could get broken down into, you know, lawyers, HR, so on and so forth. And I think we're going to be having a discussion about that in the future. But this is kind of some of the biggest categories that we have for our expenditures in the general fund. Can I skip that? There we go. All right, final slide, the budget versus actuals. So believe it or not, I don't actually know what the, what we're going to do with a general fund this year. We have a budgeted deficit. But how that's going to really turn out, you know, my crystal ball doesn't actually seem to work that well. I looked back at the last six years, and actually, the only year that we predicted that we were going to have a surplus in the general fund, we had one of the biggest, yeah, the biggest deficit that we did. Of course, that was the year that COVID hit. There's always a good explanation for why some of these numbers changed so much from what we had budgeted. So just kind of, that's just trying to give you an idea of, if you see that $800,000, don't, don't panic. So over the last six years, we had about $150,000 net surplus. And I think with our, you know, start, we have about a million dollars in our fund balance. So it really hasn't changed all that much in the last six months or in the last six years. But, you know, as you can see, things can fluctuate pretty, pretty drastically on a year-to-year basis. So that is the presentation that I have prepared. And again, I apologize for not getting these slides out to you. If you want to go over them and come up with some more questions, feel free to send them my way.
Riley, I want to ask you to provide a little bit of color commentary on the concept of one-time versus ongoing revenues. And maybe comment about receipt of ARPA funds and how those have reflected on general fund deficits versus surplus.
Sure. So since I'm on this page, let's look at 2021, you know, so we had budgeted that we were going to have a deficit, and we ended up with a surplus. Overall, there was like a $1.4 million difference between what we had budgeted, what an actual was. And about a half a million of that was these, these ARPA funds, those weren't expected going into it. And so that's one of those things that can make a big difference. So if we go back to this revenue, I think, you know, some of the talk of ongoing versus, you know, one time. So cardroom taxes, that's one that we always were really hoping was just going to be one of those consistent. It's, you got that X amount of dollars coming in, and that's how much people like to gamble. That's going to stay nice and steady. That used to be at about $3 million a year. That's obviously decreased quite a bit. So even some of the things that we think of as hopefully being kind of stable aren't necessarily all that stable. Retail sales, that one is always going to be a pretty big chunk of our revenue. But again, that one varies quite a bit from year to year. You know, we had that huge school that was built last year, and that resulted in a very, very high retail sales and use taxes. Property taxes, that's one that stays about the same. You know, it's going to not get that much higher than that over the next year. But you're going to be seeing that money year after year after year. I can't imagine people not paying property taxes, what kind of legislation that would take. So then these ARPA funds, that was about 10% of what we had gotten. That was a grant that we had received to, again, we haven't decided exactly how that money is going to be spent. But that was, we say one time, it was two times. We got it in 2021 and 2022. But it was 10% of the budget, of the revenue, sorry, this is not budget, these are actuals that we're looking at. 10% of our actual revenue that we got that we cannot, we won't be seeing that. So if everything else stayed exactly the same, you know, we would be looking at 4.2 million dollars going on. Licenses and permits, that's another one that can kind of vary quite a bit. I wouldn't say that that's a one-time thing or not, right? Because our ongoing licenses and permits, as well as our charges for services, are usually quite a bit lower. So when we do all of this extra building and development, all of that stuff's going on, those will increase our licenses and permits and our charges for services a bit. But only so much. That sewer interfund loan repayment, that's an ongoing one until that's eventually repaid, but that's years and years and years in the future. That was a pretty hefty loan that they took out to fund all that capital purchases that were made. So, you know, a lot of these big things that, for most of these items, you can count on them year after year. If nothing else, you'll be seeing that same revenue stream, what, how much they are, how much they fluctuate. That can depend on what we're talking about. But to have such a large item, you know, 10%, that is just a, you know, an irregular thing. It's only going to be 2021, 2022. Essentially, what we're trying to say is we can't count on $4.7 million in revenue in the general fund year after year. I believe that's what you're saying, or we're hoping for.
Yes, yes, I was hoping you could highlight that. And in, you know, just a general comment about municipal budgeting. You want, you know, from a fundamental standpoint, you want your ongoing revenues and your ongoing expenses to align. One-time sources of revenue, you want to do one-time expenses like capital projects with. If you're counting on one time to provide your ongoing services, then there's a good chance that those one-times are going to end at some point. And this is the case where, you know, there's some jurisdictions around Clark County have become very dependent on development revenues, construction, sales tax, and permit fees to fund general government and have gotten themselves into some trouble, both from an audit standpoint and from a, you know, funding ongoing operations standpoint. So I think those are important principles to keep in mind when you're thinking about the budget and how the city's finances work.
Hey, Jeff, thank you for that. I mean, that makes a whole lot of sense. One of the things that I'm hoping for tonight is what has the city done? And what can we do in the future to address exactly what you just discussed?
All right, Riley, do you want to take a stab at that question? And then I've, I've got a slide that I can put up that Paul Lewis put together a few years ago.
Sure.
I'll make you the presenter, Jeff. Meanwhile, I'll make you the presenter while Riley's answering that call.
Okay.
Well, from a philosophical standpoint, you know, what, all we can try to do is increase our revenues the best we can and decrease our expenditures. You know, that's trying to stay fiscally solvent. That's, that's what all you can really hope for. So some of the things, you know, trying to increase our revenues, we've had a whole lot of development. There's a number of projects that are currently going on. We try to apply for grants. You know, and even if those things aren't going to be a consistent and ongoing things, grants are always, you know, usually to fund a specific thing. But anything you can to get dollars coming in the door is just always helpful. From an expenditure standpoint, you know, it's important to kind of review what all of your expenditures are every time you, you know, you write a check. What are we, what are we buying? Do we need to buy this? Could we get it, you know, could we get it cheaper from somewhere else? You know, there's materiality in all of this, of course, because, you know, we're talking about $4.7 million in revenue. And so I'm not going to spend, you know, a month trying to get us to $2 cheaper park here or there. So, you know, trying to balance how much, where to focus your efforts, I'm sure that's something that people that are not just the guy that does the books have a better idea about than me. I'm sure that's something that people that are not just a guy that does the books have a better idea about than me. But just trying to keep all of this financial stuff in the back of your mind, I suppose. And looking ahead, looking at what the projections are for your different revenue streams. And you know, sometimes you can rely on past data to give you some trends, but sometimes it is kind of up in the air. And so actually, that's one of the next projects that I have. Actually redoing the reserve fund policy was originally next. And then we, that got bumped for doing a forecast for you guys. Five or six years, something like that of looking what at our revenue streams, our expenditure streams, the ones that we know of, the ones that we can rely on, making our best guess at the rest of them. And yeah, trying to make decisions based on that.
And I'll, I'll pick up from there, Councilmember Casper. So there are lots of ways that we, you know, try to bring additional revenues into the city. And maybe one of the things that I should do is periodically I give a presentation about economic development and what the city's role is in economic development in terms of creating place, doing planning and land use action that creates an environment that invites private sector investment. And some projects that we can do towards that end. When we go out and look for grants and earmarks, the programs that fund those grants and earmarks at the state and federal level are there predominantly to fund one-time expenses like capital projects. So the, the city's tenant improvements of the TDS building to utilize that as a, as the new city hall were, those were funded through a grant of over $1.2 million that we were able to get out of the state capital budget last year. We have another project for the community center, improving the commercial kitchen and doing some parking lot improvements. And that is also being funded through the capital budget. A couple of years prior, we got about one and a half million dollars to fund the pre-construction work for East Fourth, where it crosses Breezy Creek between Highland and the intersection there by the Chevron Station. So that whole section of road, removal of the fish blocking culvert on Breezy Creek. That was all, all the planning, engineering and design for that was funded through a capital budget earmark. There are other grant programs at the state level. Transportation Improvement Board is one that we have put in for before and gotten funding. We have a little over a million dollars for construction of that East Fourth Breezy Creek project that's coming through a federal program. DOT runs a rural surface transportation block grant program. And we were successful in obtaining a million dollars for that East Fourth Breezy Creek project. And I say, you know, ongoing operations typically are your things like your consumable supplies and personnel costs. And so there are two programs that I know of in existence that fund at the municipal level salaries for employees. One is the Department of Justice has the COPS Hiring Program. And every year, there's a different emphasis for that program. And, and Councilmember Casper, you might be familiar a little bit with that, given your professional role. But it's for hiring new police officers and it funds 100% or no, 75% of a beginning officer's salary for three years. And then the jurisdiction has to fund at 100% the fourth year of that officer's salary. It's a competitive program. There's a different emphasis every year. They might have, you know, Gun Violence Task Force might be in vogue in one budget cycle. And so, you know, jurisdictions that have statistical issues with gun violence, statistically higher gun violence issues are the ones who are successful in obtaining those grants. Where the emphasis might change the following year to, you know, school resource officers or some other area of emphasis that the Department of Justice wants to see more law enforcement emphasis on. The other program is through FEMA and it is for jurisdictions that have fire departments. And it's to assist in similarly in hiring new firefighters and staffing up fire departments. And so those are the two that fund kind of those ongoing things. Pretty much everything else funds one-time expenses and capital projects. What you see on the screen is a list of two types of revenue options that Paul Lewis put this together for the Budget Advisory Committee back in 2018, brought it to council for a retreat in early 2019. And the numbers have likely changed slightly, have come up maybe a little bit. But the sources of revenue, the column on the far left as you're looking at it are the same. And so there are two types. There are council authorized and there are voter authorized. So for example, on the voter authorized, if you're looking at the lower part of the screen, the city could ask the voters to approve a levy lid lift, property tax levy lid lift. So this would be voted, would require 50% voter approval. And the rate would go to the max that the city could levy or, you know, whatever the council wanted to propose. But the max, if you went to $1.60 per thousand of assessed value, would generate around an additional $200,000 in revenue for the city. And that, you know, if, if you look at other jurisdictions, if they run a levy lid lift, you know, some of them are generating tens of millions of dollars. And that's because they have a much higher assessed value to work off of in terms of their property tax levy. There are some others there. Transportation Benefit District would be a restricted fund. So, you know, you could propose a TBD to voters, you know, which would be tab fees, there's a sales tax option. And you can use those to fund road improvements and road projects. You can also use it as grant match. Have some other utility taxes, public safety sales tax, which is voted, you know, some of that would go to the county. And then you kind of see some other options there that you could put out to the voters. But generally speaking, a lot of those revenue options have a specific use tied to them. So they, they don't all go to fund general government. The most obvious one that does would be the property tax levy lid lift. So on the top.
Jeff, Jeff, real quick, is there, is there something that the city can do or introduce to the public? Something along the lines of like a public safety fund for the city, for people that live in the city, to help fund some of these, the, like the, the police and such? There's something like that that we can author and send out to the voters?
That, that would be property tax levy lid lift. So you would want to, when you make a proposal to the voters, outline a specific purpose of what it's for.
And so. How do other cities do that then, Jeff? Because if you go like to Las Vegas or something, when I was younger, they didn't have anything that said resort fees or anything like that. It used to just be whatever they charged you at the hotel and it was done. Now you go in and the city gets $40 a night per person and it goes to a bunch of these other expenditures that the city has. So how, how do other cities pass stuff like that and we, we can only use the levy lid lift?
Well, Las Vegas is in a different state. And so you are under the laws of the state of Washington, which enable the city. The, the powers that the city has come from the state. And, and so in statute, you're given the authority to levy taxes or to operate different government services. And so, you know, other states have other laws and other opportunities to generate revenue from, from different sources. But in, in Washington, typically when you see, you know, a school district, a maintenance levy is the same thing as a levy lid lift. It's to fund ongoing operations, to maintain teaching positions and that sort of thing. And so you would do similarly, a same, the same kind of thing. You would say, we're going to do our levy lid lift, we're going to go to the max. And that's going to enable us to hire two more police officers. Or, you know, if you have a fire, you would fund additional firefighters. The other, if you were going to fund a capital project, then you could, if, if you wanted to exceed your councilmatic authority to incur debt, then you could put a bond out, a capital bond out to voters to fund like a new police station or whatever it would be. And other jurisdictions have done that as well. There are some other taxes that you can impose. So, you know, if you look at that council authorized list, general fund reserves and reserve funds are in your wheelhouse. You decide how to use your reserve funds, where to apply those. And generally, we've been using those reserves to shore up deficits of operating expenses. Reserve funds generate interest and you can decide to, you know, return that interest into the general fund. You can do, you can cut expenses and you can do that. You know, generally that means you're going to reduce services if you're going to reduce expenses to balance that out. So you're going to lose staff or you're going to lose some kind of service that you deliver. You're going to have to reduce it. There is a sewer loan that transfers revenue into the general fund. A long time ago, and I'm not familiar with all the particulars on this, but some time ago, when the wastewater treatment plant was built, the city used the general fund to build that. And, you know, I think Riley made it clear that there's general government and then there's enterprise funds. The other businesses that the city operates like sewer and stormwater. And so you have this, you know, loan program going on and the, we have enough rate payers that are contributing to the sewer system that now the wastewater treatment plant is returning some funds to the general fund on a regular basis. And I think what was budgeted for this year is on the order of 400,000. So it's, it's a good chunk. But again, that's going to be one-time in nature because once the note is paid off, then that revenue source goes away. So it's not an ongoing source of revenue like property tax or sales tax or utility tax is the other one. It was a three-legged stool of funds, of revenue sources to fund ongoing operations. You can look at your fees and we've been, over the past few years, recalibrating our building and development fees. In the near future, you'll see some fees come before you for land use. And those, those are not allowed to be used to fund, like you can't raise your building fees up to fund the police department. Your building fees need to fund the services for building, like your building official plans review, building inspectors, land use and planning actions and so on, to review applications. So in delivering services that facilitate development, your fees have to be calibrated to approximate what the cost of those services is. You could institute a local business and occupation tax. That is a councilmatic revenue source. There are a few sources of utility tax that are listed here. Garbage, stormwater, cable, TV and water and sewer. Leasehold excise tax is an option, although we're unclear what the tax base is for that. You can increase business licensing fees and that would generate a small amount of revenue. And then there is a transportation benefit district option that is councilmatic and that would be a tab fee, a $20 additional tab fee that you could use to fund your streets program. Again, it's a, it's a restricted fund, restricted revenue source, and it has a specific use tied to it. So that's the, that's a pretty exhaustive list of your revenue options. From a legislative standpoint, you know, the 1% limitation on property tax increases was instituted through an initiative, I think it was Initiative 747, going back around 15 years ago. Liz probably knows exactly when that happened. Cause she was probably on council at the time. But that limited jurisdictions' ability to raise property tax to 1%. Well, you know, if your costs are going up more than 1% and the only lever you have is property tax, then you're going to be in a deficit position. And so that's been the case for many, many years. And jurisdictions have gotten creative and have gotten more efficient at delivering services as a result. But we've also seen where there's the inability to maintain service levels commensurate with the increase in population. So that's, that's a pretty significant challenge for all jurisdictions in Washington State. And there has been talk at the legislature for many years about making it so you could increase your property tax levy consistent with the rate of inflation, at least, to try to keep up with your expenses. So any questions about this slide and the, the revenue policies that the city council has the authority to adopt? Okay, so I'm going to flip back to this, which you saw last week. And this just shows you, this is general fund, the blue line are revenues, the orangish line are expenses. And what I've taken out in the revenue side of this line are transfers. And that would be the one-time transfers predominantly coming from the wastewater treatment plant. But included are one-time sources like ARPA funds, for example. And so you can see that the, you know, the gray bars on the bottom is the general fund reserve. And you can see that 2015, there's a gap between the blue and the red where the blue's on top. That's, that's a positive situation to be in. And you built reserves and then things changed in 2017. And the structural change that you see in this data in 2017 is the opening of the Alana Casino and the reduction of gambling activity revenues from the card rooms going from over $3 million a year down to about where it is now at, you know, $900,000 to $1 million per year. And you can see a significant gap between 2018 and 2020. Of course, 2020, we had COVID. And so the gambling-related revenues almost hit the lower bound of zero. And then we see it start to pick back up again in 2021. If I add in the transfers, that blue line improves slightly. And remember that those transfers are on the order of around 400,000. So 400,000 still doesn't bridge this huge gulf that you see here, but helps. And then this last slide is again, something that Paul Lewis put together for us a few years ago, looking out into the horizon going out to 2026. And you know, we're going to, as we work on budget throughout the year, we'll update this forecast model with more current parameters. But the fundamentals of expenses exceeding revenues and using reserves to shore up that deficit is pretty consistent. Questions on these? So, you know, sorry to my. So, you know, sorry, Mike. I feel like I'm putting a crap sandwich on a plate and sticking it in front of you and telling you to eat it. This is not, these, there are no easy choices for council to make to correct these, um, issues going forward. Um, there, there are going to be some hard discussions and challenging things to discuss and, um, lots of work with the community to understand the issues and what's behind them. So I'll stop sharing my screen. And, uh, I think now we're turning it over to Chief Richardson.
Again, before we start with Chief Richardson, uh, Jeff, I appreciate your contribution here to this evening's, uh, work session. Riley, great job. Thank you. Again, we've covered a lot of materials. Casey, did what Jeff went over just now, does that help you with the different options available to the city as far as raising revenues?
Yeah, it does. Um, I think it puts a, a better perspective on exactly where the city is at. Um, but I don't, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, remove all hope by any means. I think that if we can get some of that, uh, development going and, um, take advantage of some of the, some of the options that we as a city council have and, and then probably even looking into some of those voter-approved, um, fund potentials, we may be able to at least make up for some of the one-time ARPA funding, um, fees, because it seems like those numbers are, are about equal. So, um, you know, where, whereas the, at the last meeting, it was kind of bleak what type of, uh, funding resource the hotel was going to provide at 90 some thousand or whatever it was that Jeff said. Um, when you take that and add it to the, the 200,000 from the levy and, and some of the other options, now we're right back up at that $400,000 to $500,000 level. So, um, I think, I think the other council members are just ready to start looking into how we make these things happen. Um, you know, I, I think a big point of tonight should be not laying blame or pointing any fingers at the challenges that we're, that we're facing. But bottom line is the city has never faced these challenges before. So we have to look at solutions that we've never needed to explore before. Um, I know at least the counselors that I've talked to previously, when, when we were campaigning and everything else are, are interested in what's best for the, the city. So we're ready to start working on, on some of these projects. Um, I'm looking forward to, to coming up with some new ideas and making some decisions.
And I, if I can throw in a little bit more, you know, context, uh, back when I started with the city in late 2018, Paul Lewis was involved in helping us with budgeting. Paul's kind of retired. He's helped a lot of jurisdictions, uh, cities, uh, helped the county, helped, uh, you know, fire districts and stuff with different budget and forecasting issues for many years. And, uh, you know, as we talked about the impact of the opening of the ALNA casino and how, um, that is going, it has been and will continue to impact city revenues for the long term. You know, Paul talked about what we're trying to do is a long play where we engineer a soft landing, um, to, to get our revenues and expenses aligned. And that involved, um, you know, this long play of development and land use actions that'll bring in, um, some additional development, some sales tax, um, and some additional property tax, increase the tax base, um, but also reducing expenses. And in the near-term use of the city's reserves to bridge the gap, because the, the abruptness of the drop in revenue related to ALNA is, is pretty significant, you know? It's hard to, in a city this size with a budget this size, to make up for two to two and a half million dollars a year in revenue loss.
Yeah, I agree, Jeff. I, I also think that, that what's done is done and we need to look at as many options for partnerships as, as we can. Um, and I think, I think we need to swallow some of our pride in certain areas and, and start looking for those opportunities to, to get the city back on its feet and where it needs to be.
Yeah, great point. All right, um, I guess.
I had one thing, I had one thing to say too, is Sean Boyle. I was just saying, you know, I, I don't know, I'm sure there's many different ways to look at this, but just like the, the idea of bringing like a chamber of commerce to the city to, you know, try and seek out, I don't know if we use anybody right now for bringing other businesses to the community or, you know, just things like that. It was, do we have any implementation of resources to bring businesses to the city right now, I guess is what I'm asking? Or can we do, do something like that?
So the city is a member of the Columbia River Economic Development Council and, uh, CREDC focuses predominantly on, uh, employment lands, lands for jobs. So not necessarily commercial retail type of stuff, but looking more at, uh, targeted sectors like, you know, manufacturing and technology and so on. And the basic, one of the basic components of economic development is having land for someone to come in and develop for that purpose. You know, it's, if you look at the city of Camas, they have a, you know, chip fab that's valued at over a billion dollars that contributes to their property tax role. Their city and their, uh, school district are well-funded because that, they have that type of highly concentrated, high-value investment in, uh, not just the building, but the equipment inside the plant, the equipment all contribute to their valuation. And, uh, so sites for that type of development are very scarce in our county and the city actually happens to have one. It's up at the junction and it's identified as a top, um, piece of property for that type of economic development. Now there are challenges in developing that site because of the topography and because of the location of utilities. And so, um, you know, strategy there is to work with the property owner, which we've been doing or attempting to do for quite some time, uh, to try to identify some sources of funding for planning and engineering to get sewer laterals to that site, to get roads built into that site. And, uh, when that planning and engineering is done, you have a number and you can go chase dollars at the state and federal level to fund the construction of that infrastructure. And once that infrastructure is in, what you have is a site that is pad-ready. So the timeline for someone to invest in the development of it, get a building built, permitted and built is much shorter when all that civil infrastructure is there, ready to go. And, uh, in the economic development world, uh, most of the inquiries that we get, um, as a region, people are looking to turn dirt on a site within 12 to 18 months. And we have a lot of sites that it's more like 24 to 48 months before it's going to be ready to turn dirt. So what jurisdictions can do is invest in, in things and seek out grant funding, one-time sources of revenue, uh, like grants and earmarks to get those sites closer to developability. But it also requires property owners that are willing to, to play. Any other questions? All right, I think Chief's up next. But Chief, we can't hear you. You're muted, Bob, or something.
He's not muted, but we cannot hear him. Chief, do you think you can leave and come back in? We still can't hear you.
Jeff, I'd ask you one more question, just going back on that. And it's neither here nor there, but has that, um, development company produced any revenue for the city at this point?
Has CREDC, CREDC is a partner.
So, yeah, but I've been saying, have they been able to bring any businesses to the city or?
Uh, you know, since I have been involved with La Center, I'm not familiar with any, any projects that they've landed in the city of La Center. They have worked to, to market the, uh, employment land up at the junction that I've talked about. They, they were heavily involved in that. But again, they're, we haven't seen anything in La Center yet through them. But they are a public-private partnership. And, uh, you know, because they're only quasi-public, they're not subject to the same, um, limitations that public jurisdictions have. So, you know, in the economic development space, um, confidentiality for private companies and private investors is critical. And being that, you know, there are very few things in, in terms of city records that are not considered public records. Um, it's, you know, if you are a public agency dealing with somebody who's going to make a, you know, multi-million, multi-billion dollar investment in your community and has a competitive environment that they are working in, um, they're going to be real skittish about dealing with you and playing, you know, showing their hand to the market. So CREDC is an effective go-between. They can field the inquiry, they can hear what the, you know, who the client is, what specifically they're looking for. And then they'll put out kind of an all-points bulletin to all the community development people, uh, in the county and say, you know, we've got this project X, we'll call it, that needs, you know, so much water capacity and sewer capacity and is going to generate so many trips. And here's the land use and here's the size of the site that they need and the configuration of it. Do you have anything? And so we'll all kind of look at properties in our jurisdiction and we keep tabs on what's available and what's not. And we give them the feedback and if things move forward, then, you know, they might come for a site visit, might come to meet the, the mayor and, uh, talk about the local community, hear about the schools and that sort of thing. But it's important, you know, that, that there's a go-between that's not subject to the Public Records Act that can kind of filter that information out to the, uh, to the cities.
I have a question, Jeff.
Sure.
Um, what's, uh, some of the history or relationship like with, uh, Port of Ridgefield? And what have you done to help connect with them, with that development?
Yeah, so Porter Ridgefield has jurisdiction over a portion of the city. And, uh, there have been, you know, there are regular, um, interactions at the staff level between, uh, myself and, uh, staff at the Porter Ridgefield. The former CEO Brent Grinning and I, uh, have worked together for a number of years when I was at the county and then, you know, when I was, uh, you know, working here at La Center. And, um, the port has had in the past, very limited ability to, uh, do development outside of their waterfront area. They took on a rather significant environmental cleanup project and site redevelopment project. And, uh, you know, I think they've done dark fiber and we have, uh, dark fiber. Um, we're part of that loop going down to the bridge. So part of La Center has dark fiber, but they've, I think, struggled to find, um, an operator for the dark fiber. Um, so those contacts continue and, um, you know, we, we would hope that they would take on some role with some of the property up at the junction as well. And, uh, Chief, for you? You have to unmute. We still can't hear you.
So yes, Chief, if you could actually just call in. And then I will make you the person for if you had a slide to share.
Real quick, Jeff, uh, does the CREDC cost us any money to be a part of?
Yeah, we pay dues. Um, I can't remember what our dues are, if they're, you know, 2,500 a year, 5,000 a year. They have, uh, you know, pretty minor for the smaller jurisdictions. I think the county, when I was there, we paid like 100,000 a year. I think the city of Vancouver paid 100,000 a year, but that's going back like 10 years Any other questions I can answer? And maybe what I can do is we can schedule a work session prior to.
I have a follow-up question, if that's okay, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, I just, I feel like I don't, I just want to expand more on my question. I just feel like we didn't, I don't know, I didn't feel like it was really fully answered. Um, like have you, have you really, because I'm trying to get connected with them and I want to get, you know, on that committee and kind of understand more of what's going on. Um, you know, have you made any connections or have they approached us about their desires or their vision for the future or relationship style?
Uh, so you're asking if there have been meetings between the city and the port?
Well, right, obviously there has been some meetings. I'm just saying like, what is there, what's, what's your connection or the city's connection with them as far as vision and the needs for the next step? I mean, how much connect, how much, how much time has been spent developing that relationship?
Uh, well, I would say, uh, enough time reflective of their interest in the city and their capacity to do investment in the city. They've indicated that they're not exactly ready to pursue something in the city of La Center at this time.
Why is that?
Uh, well, I think it's a combination of, you know, what they see as potential opportunities that fit the type of development that they do as a port, um, the, the property owner profile, uh, that they would be working with and the property owner interest, um, and their available revenues to acquire and redevelopment on a property.
So I'd like to just add a little bit to that as well. Councilmember Fox, so, um, you know, you have volunteered to attend the, uh, Port of Ridgefield monthly meetings and, um, the city council has participated in those meetings here, um, for the past several years. Uh, most recently, council member Hill, uh, pretty much performed your role as a representative of the city attending those meetings. Uh, the Port District has a, um, a board, um, that's an elected board. There's three individuals that serve on that board. You'll have the opportunity to meet with each one of those commissioners. Have you had a chance to do that yet?
Uh, no, the, what I've looked into it, I might, I've been thinking about maybe bringing up, I might need to pass it on to another council member because of the time of the meeting really conflicts. So I've been, I've been trying to figure that out. Cause okay, you have a monthly meeting at 3 o'clock?
I believe that's correct, yeah. But, um, it, you know, whoever is going to be the council liaison, uh, something I would encourage you to do is to reach out. They have a new CEO, Randy Mueller, who, um.
Oh, I know him.
Okay, yeah, Randy's been around. He, uh, ran the.
He was in college with him.
Okay, good guy. Um, he's got a lot of background with the Port of Ridgefield, could work there before he became the CEO of the Port of, uh, Shehalis. And now he's back as CEO of Port of Ridgefield. But encourage, you know, whoever the liaison is to schedule time with Randy. Um, some windshield time would be good too. Go down, go to their different property holdings and see what kind of development they're doing and, um, learn about what their. learn about what their capacity is to make additional investments at this time.
Yeah, I mean, knowing that it's only one day a week, or excuse me, one day a month, I'm pretty sure I can move my schedule around to make it work. I've been just trying to work on those details. But yeah, thank you.
Okay, do we have Bob Richardson? Still, we can see your mouth moving, but hear nothing.
We need to unmute your phone, just a second. Is your phone muted? I can't, I can't physically unmute it, Chief. Okay, I've given you the ability now to unmute yourself. To unmute your cellphone. I don't, I'm sorry, I-
GoTo did some kind of update today and it's kind of screwed everything up.
Can, can you call back in on the cellphone and I won't mute you this time?
We'll try it one more time.
We'll try it one more time.
Yep.
All right, in the meantime, can I entertain any other questions that you might have for me on budgets or economic development or whatever you want to talk about?
Okay. Okay, appreciate that, Jeff. So again, we've covered an awful lot of material here. We'll give the chief just one more chance to join us on his cellphone. If not, we won't be able to hear the presentation. The chief was just basically going to do a quick update for the council as to some of the questions that were raised at our last work session regarding some other agencies that he's visited with regarding contracting services for law enforcement. Let's give him a minute here.
I, I could mention that we just, so there was a deadline Friday, there was a deadline today for appropriations for the supplemental budget at the state. And we did submit a request both in the capital and transportation budgets for $11.6 million for Eastforth Breezy Creek construction. And we submitted two requests strictly for the transportation budget. One for Pacific Highway, basically there from the turn up above the bakery going out to city limits up by Bolin to do design engineering on that facility. And I think we're asking for around four and a half million for that. And another one for around three million, I think, on Aspen, kind of where that truck route is going up from the roundabout. That street's gotten pretty beat up and we're looking for some help from the state to reconstruct. Bob, is that you?
Yes, finally. Can you hear me?
We hear you fine, Chief. Appreciate all your efforts here to make that happen. So, yeah, we hear you fine.
Okay, I wanted to follow up from a meeting last week and give you an update. So there was some information that was brought up by Councilmember Boyle about the Calhats tribe. It was kind of in conflict with what I had heard in December from the police chief. And I believe that Councilmember Boyle's meeting was probably prior to my meeting with the police chief. So I, I did reach out to the police chief again and it just so happened that last week he had a meeting with the chairman and the chairman was interested in looking to see if it was feasible to provide policing services to the city of La Centre. So I will be having a meeting with Chief Pound tomorrow to discuss that. And in addition to that, the day after the meeting, I had a meeting with the Woodland Police Chief, Chief Kelly over at the Woodland Police Department. And we had a, a conversation about whether or not they would be willing to. And obviously, they are also interested in exploring that concept. He is out on vacation in Hawaii right now, so we haven't been able to see to be further. As you know, we've been working for quite a long time. We approached the sheriff's office, we approached Ridgefield, the Calhats tribe in Woodland before, and now it looks like things have changed because of the time period. So I am going to pursue those options and perhaps come back to council with some information. But I did want you to know that there are a couple of issues with both of these proposals. Obviously, the sheriff's department would be the easiest to work with just because they have the same operational processes, we're on the same dispatch center, same record center. The county would be taking the liability, but they have a staffing issue. The Calhats Police Department, operationally, they're on the same dispatch center, the same report-writing center. And staffing for them would actually probably be a bit easier because since they're a separate retirement system, they can hire local police officers that have retired once before. And then they can work for the Calhats tribe and most of their officers over there are retirees. So they're, they've retired at 52, 53, and then they're working another job. Now, there are two issues we have to explore with them. The first issue is obviously the liability issue. If we need to work with AWC and say, okay, what are the, what are the issues with signing a contract with a sovereign nation? Especially when it comes to who's got the liability? Because generally, when you contract out to an agency, they pick up the liability other than enforcement of city ordinances. And there have been some cases in the state of Washington where municipalities have had contracts with tribal governments. And when something has gone sideways and the city gets sued, they turn around to their contract and say, no, this is a responsibility of the sovereign nation. And the sovereign nation has said, no, we're not going to honor that contract. So that has happened. So that's something we have to work with, we have to be aware of. And the other issue is just obviously perception and that's something we'll have to work with. You know, when card rooms call for the police department and the Calhats Police Department shows up, what kind of perception is that in the community or with these card room owners? So that's something we have to overcome. It's not, not to say that we can't, but it's just one of those things we have to keep in mind as a group here for the discussion. And then there's the city of Woodland, and the city of Woodland is down two positions. But if they hired our officers that are remaining, they would be fully staffed and probably would only have to hire four additional officers to cover the city of La Centre 24/7. So staffing-wise, they might be able to do it. Liability-wise, if they take our liability, which is generally the way it's done, we have no issues there. However, operationally, that is a difficult situation because since this car would be working in La Centre, but would be, also be a Woodland car, that car would have to go between two counties backing up units in, in both counties. And they operate off a completely separate dispatch center, a completely different record system. And, and so we would have to figure out the electronic and technology issues. I did ask county IT if they could run two different versions of two different software on the same mobile data computer. And they said, no, it's not possible. So that is something we'd have to look at. So that's where we are right now today. And again, I'm going to reach out with Calhats tribe again tomorrow and start conversations. Just to get an idea of, okay, how do we share the cost? Because we shouldn't have to pick up the full cost if these units are going in and out of each other's jurisdiction. So we have to look at, okay, what's the proportion of the cost we would pick up? How much staffing do we need? Those kinds of things. So that's kind of where we are right now.
Okay, thank you for that, Chief. Any questions for Chief Richardson?
No, I want to thank him for that because that's, that's good news. That's progress moving forward and, and different options on the table. I want to thank the council members that actually came up with some of those ideas and pushing forward with them. I think it was great, great teamwork.
Yeah, I'd just like to add too that I think that, I think those are, are very viable options that we need to, need to explore, obviously making sure that, that all of the bases are covered as far as our liability and our, our costs. But I can't, I, I don't think that we're in a position to short ourselves of, of any potential opportunities. I do agree with the, the chief that had we signed the contract with the county a year ago, we wouldn't be in this position, but that wasn't necessarily in the cards at the time. So now we're in a position where we have to find something. And I think looking into reopening discussions with, with the potential agencies that are close to us are, are going to be very valuable and helpful. Getting those partnerships put in place so that we can provide that coverage and, and confidence and safety to the, to the community here is what's really important.
So I appreciate that, Councilmember Casper, and, and then just your comment just, you just made about agencies that are close to us. Of course, the Calhats reservation is, you know, less than two miles from downtown La Centre, really the two cities about each other. But are you saying that in your view that we're not close to Clark County as far as proximity? I mean, what's, what's your thoughts on, when you say close to, I mean, I spend quite a bit of time, you know, working the city. I see cruisers, deputy sheriffs in their cruisers driving through La Centre on a very regular basis. More so than I see, you know, any cruisers from Woodland or, or even from the tribe. So I'm just trying to get a, you know, what your thoughts are as far as what closeness means. We are in Clark County. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I, I think there's a couple of reasons you see that. Many, many county deputies live in the city of La Centre. The county has take-home vehicles, so that's why you don't see Vancouver police cars or Portland police units parked in, in folks' driveway that live in, live in town. I, I think the, the biggest thing that I picked up from this last meeting that we had was it almost seemed as, as though the, the county situation was, was being ignored. And I've sat down and had a, a good conversation with Bob Richardson. And again, in a, a perfect world, or if this was a year to a year and a half ago, I think contracting with the county would have been the best option. The problem is we waited, we waited. It, it just, the way it ended up working out, again, I don't think that, that anybody in particular is to blame for it. But when Chief Horch said, hey, we don't have the staffing to sign this contract right now, and may not be able to look at it again for another six to eight months, I think he was being very optimistic. I, I think that we're going to be looking at probably two years or more before the county is in any position to commit to a, a staffing agreement for a, a city like, like the centre. What we don't know is how long is it going to be before there are people interested in applying for law enforcement jobs again? Chief Richardson hit it right on the head when he said that the Calhats tribal police have a huge advantage over any of the law enforcement agencies in, well, across the country really, but especially in Clark County, in that they're on a different retirement plan. They have the ability to offer different incentives for, for coming in and truly being an officer for a, on a tribal reservation, that individual is afforded more protection than a county deputy or a, or a city officer is. So of any agency in the county, I think, I think the Calhats tribal police have the best opportunity to increase their staffing by four to six people within a very short period of time, more so than the, than the county does. That's why I support Chief Richardson talking with Chief Pound tomorrow and looking into those options. I know from experience that historically, it's been very difficult to work with, with tribal agencies. However, especially in the, in the law enforcement realm, those relationships have improved. They've been, the tribal police have been meeting state-level standards. Their agreements with municipalities has become more and more common. The AWS is much more supportive of agreements with, with tribal agencies and tribal governments than they have been in the past. So again, we have to come up with both temporary solutions, medium-term solutions, and then creating long-term goals as to what we want to do with the, with the city when it comes to public safety. Well, any of things for that matter, this, the same, the same conversation can be had about what Jeff Swanson was referring to when, when he was talking about prepping lands for development, you know, and putting in the sewer infrastructure and, and things like that. So again, at, at that last meeting, it kind of seemed like Chief Horch's statements fell on deaf ears, which is why I said, hey, I think we need to pick a path, but we haven't been given a, a viable path to, to take. And I think we're in a good position now to reopen those conversations, whether it be Richfield or, or or the, the, the Calhats tribe. You know, if, I'm not saying that the, that the, the county isn't close. They're the ones that are going to show up right now, tonight, if somebody calls 911. So it wasn't necessarily proximity that I was, that I was talking about, but it was the people that are, that are close to us, our closest neighbors, that would even have the, the resources to provide what we need. And the county is just not in that, in that position. So I can give you all kinds of details about how, how many positions the sheriff's office is down and how many applicants we've had in the last 45 days and how many people are in the background processes and, and all of that. And unfortunately, it's not, it's not promising. And there's, we're in that perfect storm right now where we were hit by police reform, we were hit by anti-police movements, we were hit by the COVID and everything else. And, and, and that's just in the, the law enforcement side that, that we're facing. And, and so I think what I said in the very beginning is, is my, my main point that I want to make, which is we have to start thinking outside of what we've, we've thought about before. And just making some connections with, with folks that we haven't in the past. So I think I've rambled on long enough, so I'll stop.
Well, I appreciate your input. Thank you very much. That, that was helpful. Okay, council, any other comments or questions, discussion that you'd like to have regarding both the presentations by the city accountant and Jeff?
Mayor, this is Liz. I'd like to thank the chief for revisiting the Calhats and as well as the Woodland. This has been a moving target basically since we started these discussions. And I know how frustrating it, it must be for you to continue to have the dialogue changing each time you revisit them. So as Casey mentioned, it, it's positive to see that things are changing and the possibility for continued open discussion with Woodland and the Calhats. It is rather frustrating from where we started with Clark County to where we've ended up. So I, I think, you know, we just need to continue to focus on finding some solution for the community and addressing the public safety needs. You know, even if this becomes a short-term fix. You know, even if this becomes a short term fix, as Casey mentioned, we can continue to evaluate what our options will be as things change within the, the policing industry and, and legislation and what's driving a lot of the issues that we're seeing happen right now. Because I think, you know, times are, are very difficult right now. And I, I know that things are going to continue to change. So we can continue down this path and, and find, you know, the end result that will be a positive one for the community. But overall, I think all the presentations were very helpful and very good. Covered a lot of information in a short time, so I'm sure additional questions will be coming up over time. But we've got some good resources that I've always found, you know, Jeff and Riley and the chief to be very helpful in answering questions and issues that I'm not very clear on and walking you through whatever those questions you might have. So don't hesitate to get, get in touch with them.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, this is Sean Boyle again. I just wanted to kind of, I don't know, maybe bring up my long of the, or maybe short of the long of what I believe what's going on with the Clark County Sheriff's Office. From my understanding, it sounds like they're, they won't be able to provide services to us. And therefore, that's why, you know, I've brought up the questions of looking at our other options, whether that be the Cowlitz Tribe or Woodland or whatever. But you know, I mean, I'm also open to, you know, getting creative and resourcing our officers and maybe finding a different way to think outside the box and market our community. Because I think there is probably interest for other officers and people that have their lives rooted here in southwest Washington that don't necessarily want to pick up and move their whole families to wherever part of the country makes more sense to them to do their piecework. I mean, Le Center is a pretty, it's a beautiful community to live in and raise families and be invested in the community and, you know, know where your kids are going to school. And I just think that, that's something that, you know, if we are looking to build our own police department, you know, right now, we need a short term fix, but long term, I think we need to look at being, you know, creative and however, however that may look. And what we can do to try and, you know, maybe address some of those things going forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so yes, this conversation will definitely continue. You know, Chief Richardson does have a couple of meetings here scheduled. We will schedule additional work sessions going forward on this topic and other topics. City accountant earlier alluded to the fact that he's working on an updated forecasting model for the for, to present to the city council, the one that we've been looking at that Paul Lewis prepared in two thousand and eighteen and was actually presented in two thousand and nineteen. You know, we'll have that updated here hopefully by mid-month. And we'll be presenting that to the council. And again, that needs to be refreshed because it's, a lot of things have changed from when Paul Lewis has actually put that together. That was all done pre-COVID. So we'll definitely get that scheduled for the council and then we'll continue on with some additional work sessions and opportunities to engage with the public as well. So with that being said, if there's not any other questions or comments or discussion with the council this evening, we can go ahead and adjourn. We've been at it for about an hour and a half now, a little longer. To me, that's kind of about maximum time we want to spend on one topic and anyone given evening.
Actually, I do want to bring up one point. I, I really feel that a, a city councillor or somebody would accompany Mr. Richardson to meet with the tribe in Woodland, just as another representative.
Well, I appreciate you. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, mayor. I was just going to say, yeah, I, I agree with that. I think that'd be a great idea.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, it gets, it really gets down just to being a scheduling issue and, and meeting with the chief and, and, you know, whoever he's visiting with. But, you know, I don't, I guess, chief, do you have a thought on that as far as having one of the council members included? Is that something that we've been typically in the past?
I, I haven't, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, but I think first, I think I'd like to have a, just some general conversations with the chief one-on-one. So we have some kind of frame, we don't even have a framework yet to talk, what we're going to talk about. And then once we get a framework in place, then yeah, yeah, we can have those conversations. Because I want to reach out to the chief to give him an opportunity to, if he wants anybody at tribal council, it'd be on that meeting too. Because I think if we're going to bring a city council member, then they probably want to make the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, then it gets to be a little bit, yeah, a little more challenging. You know, I think the other thing is after these conversations get initiated and started, I mean, if, if they get any traction, then of course, we would want you know, the Cowlitz Indian Tribes Police Chief to present, just like the sheriff's office has. And at that time, you can do it to the entire council. And the same thing, if anything, we gain traction with Woodland, and then we go through the same process with Woodland as all, as well. And then all the council members can get exposed to it at the same time. So, yeah, it's, it makes it a little bit more challenging, you know, because once you add one person to a meeting and then typically they'll want to have their council members involved and it might get to be a little bit off topic.
So. I was just going off of previous experience with the city, I, because I, I believe that you accompanied or somebody along the council accompanied you guys back with, when Irish was mayor. So that's why I was asking the question. You know, it's something that was precedence from before.
Yeah. You know, that's true. I mean, when the city was meeting with the tribe, we were primarily talking about wastewater at the time. And yeah, we were on a monthly meeting schedule with the tribe. But again, there were multiple, multiple people from the tribe that were participating. There were multiple people from ALNA that were participating. It was really a whole different format than what we're really talking about here. And there were agenda items. It was a little bit more of a formal meeting than just a chief to chief or public works director to public works director or what have you.
I'm sorry, again, I'm not opposed to it, but let, let me have a point during meeting with the chief. Resolve the, you know, the one issue, the liability issue. Because if AWC says absolutely not, then we're, we're kind of stuck. But let me work on that and I'd be more than happy to, to take into consideration having a, a little bit bigger group. When we have a framework we're actually hammering out, or we can do some workshops.
Okay, that sounds good, chief. Thank you.
And, and mayor, I, just for con, just for context, the city has had meetings periodically over the past couple of years with the tribal chairman, vice chair, representatives from ALNA, and that has involved mayor, council members, staff and staff on ALNA side, or ALNA and, and tribal side. So we, we have a variety of contacts. And I think what the chief is saying is there needs to be a staff to staff contact. Similar to the type of meetings Matt Jenkins would have with their wastewater treatment plan operator. So yeah, I think you leave the peer-to-peer meetings and I think it'd be appropriate for council members to participate in some of those meetings when we have tribal governance representatives there as well.
And we will continue on having those meetings with both the tribe and ALNA going forward. And there will be council members representing the city in those meetings as well. In fact, I've already spoken with Councilmember Casper about that. So, yeah. Little different issue though, a little different format, agenda, yeah. Okay. Any other questions or discussion before we adjourn this evening? Okay, I want to thank you again, Riley, for your presentation, Jeff, chief, council members for attending this evening. And again, I'm glad to see that we had some visitors as well joining us this evening. Hopefully, the meeting's been informative and I think we're probably at the beginning of one of these discussions. And they will continue. And I'll look forward to continue providing information to the council and, and again, trying to come to some resolution on some of these very, very challenging and, and difficult decisions we're going to have to meet, meet, make going forward. So with that, we'll adjourn and I hope everybody has a great rest of the evening. Thank you.